All right, is everybody ready to get the work session started? Michael?
And I understand from Councilmember Ott that he should be here in 10, 15 minutes.
Yeah, he was running a little late.
Yep. All right. So I'll just do a very, very brief kickoff once again, and then I'll turn it over to Rob. Thanks. Thanks all for being here again. This is our third joint work session. Last time when we met, you all directed us to go ahead and start, as I call papering up the draft regulations, good neighbor guidelines, so on and so forth, so that you all could have something to respond to. We provided this group with an ordinance with some good neighbor guidelines, a checklist for short-term rental owners, and you all had several days to look at that. And so we are going to consider that a straw man for everyone to respond to tonight. We hope that that's a good starting point, and it is just that, a starting point. We as staff took back what we heard from you all last time we met, and we put that into the relevant documents. And from there, it's yours to continue marking up however you wish. The only timeline we have to work on is that moratorium, which as I understand expires in mid-October. If we need to go longer to make everything real tight, we can do that. It's all up to you all. It's your process from here forward. We will go over a very, very brief presentation, I think it's seven slides, just with some additional data that you all had requested to provide some additional context for your conversation this evening. And then wherever the group wants to go from there, we're happy to do that, of course. So before I turn it over to Rob, are there any questions that I can answer for you? All right.
Hello again. Thanks for being here. You guys should have all gotten a packet. So the first thing is the PowerPoint presentation. It's pretty short, so one slide per page, plenty of room to write notes, and you can read it all. After that is the ordinance drafted by Nina. And then following that is a draft of what the application would look like. So part of that is to say, these are the questions we would ask. And then another of it is kind of like part of what the inspection it would look like. And then following that is the usage table from the code that Councilmember Nakai asked to be shared, so you guys could see what it currently looks like. And then after that is a draft of the good neighbor policy. And I did go back and make some edits to that since it was emailed out to you guys. So there's a few changes, just grammatical stuff mostly. All right. So this is a pretty short presentation. I'm going to go through it as fast as I can, so we have more time to talk, and you guys can talk amongst each other. So last meeting, you guys asked to answer a couple of questions. So first thing was percentage caps versus density caps. Like, so what I learned about that is density caps are kind of the way that things used to be, and then more and more municipalities have started using percentage caps. A lot of them have both, and some of that is just because they never got the old one off the books. And then, but it does, if your percentage caps keep, help control your overall number, the density caps, what I mean by density caps are like that 500-foot separation, or one per block face, or one per block, or so many per neighborhood, whatever. But a lot of times they get used in conjunction with each other. So you know, you could have your percentage cap that keeps your overall numbers down, but then they could all be in the same neighborhood without that density cap. So that seems to be the most common practice, is both at the same time. And then what is the percentage cap based on? So that's still really unclear, but what I've found out, it's like, so that controls a lot of your fees. Like, you know, it's the, and how much can your staff handle? Like currently, you know, could we handle managing 500 short-term rentals, depending on what the management looks like? But so you would use that, that maybe based on that, like what you can handle, what you could afford. That also goes into play when it talks about fees and things like that. More short-term rentals, they can spread those fees out, maybe it costs less and things like that. But I haven't found a really definite reason that said, hey, our city decided to go with a 3%, and this is why.
Oh, Rob, can I just jump in?
Absolutely.
Most of my communities who have put a cap in, it's directly related to them wanting to make sure that housing becomes, stays available to the workforce. So I know many of the counties and cities and towns that have put like a 6% in the past like two years, it was mostly because of that affordability and availability issue.
Okay, thank you. And then you guys asked how many STRs are licensed in each zone. So with that, I went through, we had about 180 STRs, went through those and looked up which zone they were in, and it's all listed in this chart. So you have each zone broken down, and then the current STR licenses in each zone, and then the potential build-out of each zone, and then the percent of total build-out that are STRs, and then where we're currently at, our current build-out, and then the percentage of that current build-out. So looking at the commercial, so this is really weird. So if you look down, basically, so if you look at our current build-out for central business district, community commercial, and neighborhood commercial, so they're 56, 67, and 38. We have more buildings than that in those zones. Those buildings have been permitted as residential use. So that's not to say we only have 56 buildings in our central business district, but we have 56 buildings that have been permitted to be used as for residential use. So and then the anomalies, so there are 18 that I just can't find. So, yes.
So really, those numbers on the current build-out percentage or whatever, they're irrelevant, because there's only so many residential, getting percentages isn't relevant in those three.
In those three, in the business districts, yes, or the commercial districts. So the anomalies, there were 18 licenses that I just can't find, and that could be a numerous reasons. They might have put the wrong address in in the application. There could have been some people using the Teller County's website. I guess some peoples are hidden for security reasons, so may have disappeared for that. And then there's, I mean, since the moratorium passed, like people came in to get licenses for vacant lots. So they may not have had an address, so they just put their current address down there. But so there are 18 licenses out there that I just can't pin down right now. So that's the 18 anomalies. But other than that, you can see across the board where we're at. Total of our current build-out, right now, we're at 5.97%, basically, for 5.97% of our total build-out is being used as short-term rentals.
Can I, were you ever, were you able to develop any information on owner occupied versus non-owner occupied?
No, so I can't see that currently the way that we do licensing. So these you guys saw at the last meeting, these are just the things that, they're the same recommendations. That's what you had asked us to build, or asked Nina to build the ordinance off of. And then, so these are just some other things to consider. I, so on your ordinance, in that first 522020, like it just kind of talks about the way licenses become available. And I just kind of feel like that means like anytime a license becomes available because of a cap or whatever, we go out and say, hey, there's a license available, everybody apply for it, and first one in gets it. Rather than do that, I think it would be better to be, we already have a list of people. Right now, people can apply for a license, they're just not getting approved. So that list is stacking up, and we know who was first. So just continuing that list, I think would be a good practice. Rather than every time a new one comes up, it's a lot of work for them, it's a lot of work for us, just one running list. And then some items not currently addressed. So the percentage cap versus the density cap, both or neither. Like, so that's just, last time we talked, like you guys wanted to know, hey, why do some people use density caps? Why do some people use percentage caps? So just giving us guidance on, hey, which way do we want to go? Citywide caps versus zoning caps, like Nina brought up a good comment that, you know, regulating each zone differently is a little bit more work, whereas like just doing, hey, across the board, city, we want a cap of whatever percent or whatever, a lot easier to work with. Non-owner occupied in residential zones. So in the last, we talked about potentially, sorry, prohibiting non-owner occupied STRs in single-family residents. Having a certificate of occupancy requirement. So like I said, like right now, we're giving people licenses, or before the moratorium, on vacant lots. So requiring them to actually have a place to run their business before they get a license, especially if there's only so many licenses. Limit to the number of licenses that a single person can have. Some cities do that per zone, like a single person can have more licenses in one zone than the other, just other options. Liability insurance requirements, any companies using like most of your major things like VRBO and Airbnb, like that kind of comes as a package, but people doing it on their own don't necessarily have insurance to cover. So existing licenses that are inconsistent with the new ordinance. So if you look in this ordinance at the use table, and they're not permitted in MFS and MSU, however, we have 11 STRs currently in MFS and MSUs, what are we going to do with those? And then if the, if you guys come up with a capacity limit that's less than what we have now, are we going to grandfather them in, or, sorry?
You can, I just want to clarify something. There is no, not going to be an exemption. It's going to be, if you see your, one of your second-to-last section in your ordinance, that anyone who has a current sure, business license, they will still need to go in to have a short-term rental license, totally separate. They, they need to be up on that and do that once your moratorium ends. If you guys have a cap, then it addresses that we will, that you'll consider those people first. So there's no exemption, so a person needs to proactively come into the city and apply for the new license, because otherwise these regulations and their agreement to the license terms wouldn't apply. Does that make sense? No, and no grandfather. It's a business license use, not a zoning use.
Okay, another thing is single-family attached units. So right now, we have single-family attached units in suburban residential or urban residential. They're not really multifamily zones, but they're like, they're condos, they're things like that. So it's just something else to look at, and make sure you get what you want out of it. Self attestation versus of inspections versus the city inspections. So this goes into, we've had some questions on, hey, what is this going to cost to enforce? So that depends on what you want to do. So like, looking at us, inspecting every one of these, you're looking at the code enforcement officer working about, about two hours per short-term rental to conduct an inspection. Another solution is, hey, you know, we have a self attestation of an inspection. They say, hey, we've done all this, it's all here, and we say, okay. And then the code enforcement officer, instead of, maybe they still do 100%, but they spread it throughout the year. They don't just go out in January and inspect 180 properties. Or they say, hey, I'm just going to pull 50% of these, or 75%, 10%, whatever. So they just spot check rather than, than doing all of them. So that's just how to control those costs of enforcement. But that's the difference. And then city enforcement cost recovery model, that's something that we should look at, like, hey, how much is this going to cost? And again, that's really going to depend on what, what comes out of all this. What does the ordinance look like and what's required? So putting a dollar amount on that right now is impossible. The DDA overlay district, so Karen might want to talk a little bit more about this, but you know, we're talking about the DDA property. It works.
Okay, I've kind of like talked about a crazy, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
DDA, the Woodland Park overlay, the DDA.
The crazy idea I had?
Yeah.
Okay, that I can help with. I had a crazy idea related to the DDA at Woodland Park Overlay Zone District. The Woodland Park Overlay Zone District is actually located within the central business district. So that's our downtown, the heart of our community. And you know, some of you all may be aware that we've had developers looking at wanting to do ground floor residential in that zone district, but our zoning currently has a standard in place that says residential in that zone district should be like second and third story, and you want to preserve that ground floor for commercial retail kind of uses. So the crazy idea was, how can we incentivize upper-floor residential uses? So you have, you know, live workspace, you know, people at a vibrant downtown, and then potentially pull STRs out of the residential zone district. And that was to basically exclude from the caps, or basically make, you know, no limit that if every single residential unit in that Woodland Park Overlay Zone that is on an upper floor could get an STR license. So that was, that was the crazy idea. So. It can, to, in some ways, potentially make it more desirable to put residential on upper floors instead of on the ground floor. Because ground floor, when you think about a retail patron, they're not likely to want to go upstairs to a business, especially if it's like a commercial shop kind of, kind of situation. A lot of times, especially in our little tight downtown, you know, that type of use is primarily on that, that lower level, the ground floor. But you can see, you know, residential uses on the upper floors. So how can we maximize our ground floor commercial retail space and still make it desirable to have a residence, you know, in that area without, you know, taking away ground for land area for residential use? If that made a little more sense?
A lot of downtown areas have that overlay where they do exactly that.
So the last thing on here, or yeah, the last thing on here is non-performance. So that is like, you know, if you're only going to give out so many of these licenses, then you, like, people that just have a license for the sake of having a license are wasting the license. The city's not getting revenue from it, it's not bringing in visitors. So some sort of requirement that, hey, if you have a license and you don't use it like 20 days out of the year, or whatever you want to set it at, then you lose it the next year. So it's just like, you know, these things, they're a benefit to the city. They bring people here, they bring customers to our stores. So for someone to have the license and not be using it, it's kind of just wasting it. So by saying, hey, you have to be active, or else you lose your license the next year, I think is a, is a good solution to prevent that. That's it for the slideshow. So the rest of the time is yours to ask us questions and talk amongst yourselves.
Who would like to go first? I saw Carol's hand, but go ahead, Carol.
I was just going to ask that Nina go over the ordinance, or are we just going to talk about the points brought out in Rob's slide presentation?
Yes, you are.
Just to work, tell us how she came up with it.
Right. So I don't, just one question before we go there, if I could. I just like to know, so that we're all on the same page, what a non-owner occupied, and, and well, hold on, let me look at the words. Owner occupied, what is a non-owner occupied, what's an owner occupied?
So the way, we defined that as an owner occupied is if an owner lives in the home for 185 days out of the year or more. So and then that's gone by their voter registration, their driver's license, whatever, but that's their, that's their residence for at least 185 days out of the year.
So it's their primary. I, yeah, I would, I would, I would like to define it, same idea, but just primary residence. Because like Rob said, to follow the, and we have strict language that we could use, like you said, voter registration, tax returns, sort of vehicle registration.
So something that came to mind, just for consideration before we move forward, is maybe a delineation between residents and non-residents versus owner occupied and non-owner occupied. So that's just another consideration, I think, that we could consider. Thank you.
No, I think it's a, it's a great point, because I've been reading a bunch of other municipalities' ideas, and they definitely differentiate a resident occupied versus a non-resident. And it kind of goes a little bit to Robert, what you're concerned, when you and I spoke about how you can have the big corporations coming in, those would be non-resident.
But they don't have to be occupied. See, occupied is a word that can be troublesome for me, because, because there's residents of Woodland Park that don't live in this property that they own, but yet they're here, they're present, they can respond to inquiries, they, they manage the property and are, are here physically. Whereas a non-resident that may be in Philadelphia that has something here, they may have a management company, but most of them aren't open in the evening. It just is that whole accountability piece to me.
We're in violent agreement. So either I said something wrong, or you misunderstood something.
No, no, I agree.
Violent agreement.
I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, but I was talking to Robert. Robert had brought up a valid point that I just want to throw out on the table about corporations.
And we put that in the ordinance, that concern. It's on, it's in 522020B. Licenses may only be issued to owners of properties who are a natural person, a trust, or an entity registered with the Colorado Secretary of State.
Well, the entity that, I kind of wondered about that, an entity registered with the Colorado Secretary of State, anybody can do that, and they're not a person. So.
And they don't necessarily live in Colorado.
And they don't even necessarily live in Colorado, but they fulfill the state.
Right, depends like what you're trying to do. If you're trying, if you want them to live in the state, then we can say the person who's behind that LLC, or you could just say LLCs, LPs. You guys could flush it out, and we'll talk, you know, we'll amend it appropriately. But that's, that's to address the concern that you had, had, just that's where it would be. If you want it further restricted, we can do that too.
Yeah, but I think where I was going with that is, we certainly don't want hedge funds coming in and buying a property and investing in it, and having outsiders in that regard. But I have the other side of the coin, and Lee kind of touched on it, and that is owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. You know, the very first tenant is a man's home, is this castle. So I want to be very careful that we are not, somebody who has a spare bedroom, which Airbnb started with, had a spare bedroom and said, hey, you know, I want to supplement because I'm getting older, lost my job, whatever else. I want to make sure that we're not regulating that like we're regulating the rest. I'd like to make sure that we're very clear to separate out people who live in their home and are renting out a room on a short-term basis versus people who are making it a business to rent out their entire home and, or multiple homes or whatever. So I didn't see anything in that in the ordinance, and I wonder how other people feel about the fact of protecting the privacy of a person's castle.
I, we discussed that, I believe, in the last work session we have, and I thought there's general nodding of heads with that, the thought is that someone, their own, their principal residence, that house, that house is being used appropriately, whether he has a border in the back, but not a border in the back, and, and/or just a principal, a man's home, his castle, or some, some other combination of things. Those should not be limited. If, if the ordinance is to go ahead in the sort of structure it has here, it should be, should be made clear that the cap does not apply to owner occupied.
And I didn't see that.
So that's just structurally, if we keep, if we keep it this way.
Right. For owner occupied, maybe, maybe we even want to consider a minimum number of stays before you have to even consider getting a short-term rental license, that if you only have your rooms rented out less than 30 days a year, or something like that. Because there are senior citizens who want to supplement their income, and it's very easy to have somebody stay for a week and make some money to pay the bills and stuff. But I know my mother-in-law did that, but it, long-term rental, that doesn't work for them, and they don't want to rent it out unless they have to. And now they got to go through this whole license thing and all this to do that in their own home. It's very onerous for a senior. So there may be some exclusions here that take care of owner occupied, and people who don't do this, that take up a whole license for two weeks a year.
Carol?
And I appreciate all of the comments that have been made thus far, but I, I know we did not want to go down any rabbit holes tonight. We've only had a day and a half to look at this draft ordinance. I only asked that Nina explain how she came up with the structure of this, not the details. If we could have her do that, please.
Yeah, may I, like, please do. So we, like Rob said, we took the guidance, for the most part, of what everyone, consensus maybe, you know, was brought up at the last meeting. This is obviously a conversation starter, like I've told some of you, this is a work session for you all. So the, the structure is based on recommendations for just generally, if you're going to have these regulations. I've drafted many of these throughout the state, and then the policy parts that are in here are what you directed at the work session. So versus definitions, and those are written as very specific way for a very articulate purpose, which is local contact person, we were told that's important, you want to make sure it's very specifically defined. Short-term rental unit, we were told that you didn't want them in apartment buildings, and then to separate them from bread and breakfast establishments, because that'll be something else in the use code, campgrounds, and then RVs, tents, temporary structures, that would not be safe, that wouldn't be a residential unit. We want to make sure lodging tax goes back to make sure that they're paying the lodging tax. The licensing limitations are things that were brought up, like I brought up this natural person, et cetera. I did believe that you said you, if you was in person with an LLC in Colorado, you'd still want them to have it. So we could flush this out, but it's kind of, this is a prompt discussion and see what everyone's thinking. So whether, if you want the entity to be registered with the Colorado State with the main person who lives in Colorado, or do you only want it to be a, an LLC or an LP, which are smaller than these larger corporations, that's fine, but. And then we also have proof of ownership, which also eliminates some of the corporate owners. And these are just enforcing things like, make sure you have your business license and title. The applications are important, because that's the, really, the way you're going to enforce short-term rentals, and you do it in any, in any other location, is not by giving them a ticket for $100. It's by having the threat of a hearing, just either suspend the license or revoke the license. That's what we do in liquor, that's, you know, that's the value of, of it. And in all municipalities, even just a letter that this is coming up, people comply right away, much more than a ticket. So I, I was, later on, I was very specific in that language.
Can I interrupt just one second?
Yeah.
Before we get too far along. When you mentioned about the owner occupied in town, how many ordinances that are you familiar with, that you've actually done, like Chaffee County, that requires you live in Chaffee County to own a short-term rental? Whether you live in that short-term rental or not?
A lot of the ones that are primary residents, it's of the unit being rented, but in the past like year or so, they're expanding to primary residents of either the city or the county.
But you only can live in Chaffee County to own a short-term?
Anything in the future, yeah.
Right, okay.
Denver, Idaho Springs, I mean, city of Denver, you have to only, you only could rent your primary residence itself, not even if another one.
Right.
So. So yeah, those are common. And that also deals with the corporations coming over to, taking over as well. And then now I'm on, I don't know, page three of the ordinance, the name of the license applicant must, must match the name of the owner, and the deed, that goes to, again, to the corporate ownership, because the applicant must possess at least 50% interest. And that's a date that's in Teller County, County and Recorder. We put in a cap, because that, we, just to start the discussion, 6%, I think, we pick 6% because you're almost at 6%, but then again, all of this is to get policy direction for you. Or did we take it in at this moment yet, soon, you know, so far? But the way it's written is purposeful, like, that's why you have me, but you give policy direction. You want, I think it was important for you to have a local contact person who's responding right away within an hour. Then we go to application issues and renewals. You might think there's a little repetition, but it's purposeful to kind of point to other sections. Again, if this passes, anyone with a business license that has operated short-term rental, they'll need to come into the city and get this special license, so they follow these regulations. And then they need to continue to follow your regulations every single year, you know, upon renewal. Otherwise, they won't be renewed, or they could, it could be revoked. Again, this is how you enforce what's important for you as a community. And the revocation suspension language, it's, it's written very particular, because for due process points, you want to make sure you give someone written notice, you want to make sure there's listed reasons that these are the only reasons that you can suspend or revoke the license. Again, just from my experience, and there's penalties, and then short, and then, so the first is your, first year is your Title V, which is business licensing. Then we are, then we go into 18, which is land use, your land use code. So there, the table of uses. We got the direction that multifamily should not permit. And then PC means permitted use, permitted conditionally. That alerts the reader that it's not just permitted outright. And then we're, what, we're going to look in the code, and it's, we're going to get the business license, we got to get, you know, we got to follow the rules. And then there's just further specifications that are a little more proper to make sure that it's in the land use code versus the business licensing section. So that's why I separated it out. But again, oh, then I put events, events such as concerts, parties, and weddings are prohibited, because I felt that was part, goes to the community character.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, I just, all the way at the front, section three, we now have two definitions for short-term rentals. I mean, one wasn't enough, we couldn't figure it out, so.
So the reason is because, it's very purposeful, because you want to make sure that definition is for sure defined in your land use code. So the reason is because it's, it's very purposeful, because you want to make sure that definition is for sure defined in your land use code, because that goes, Frank, to what you've been talking about for months.
I know, I'm just.
So it, it, it needs, it needs to be there, right? Because it's going to be in the use table. And then it's mostly a business licensing issue, and that's why it's defined twice.
So are these two different licenses? If you own more than one short-term rental unit, you have to have a different business license?
Correct, because the applicant has to be the owner, sure, by the deed of that property.
Thank you.
So yeah, is there any other questions for any of us? And then direction like that, you know, do, do, do you guys some feel that certain sections should be tweaked, added, separated? That's what we're here for, is to start a conversation.
So, so back to the, the person who is renting out a room, supplementing their income or whatever. Two areas that kind of bothered me in this was five point two-two, A, five point two-two, whatever it is, five point two-two, the zero dot two. It says, "It shall be unoffered for any person or entity to engage in a short-term rental business without first applying for the license." So I personally like to see a distinction between somebody who is living in their home, renting out a room, versus somebody who's renting your entire place. Second to that is.
I wrote down that note.
Sorry?
I wrote down that note already.
Okay. Under B three, it says, "An entity registered with the state of Colorado Secretary of State." And I made a note in here, "Except hedge funds and their affiliates." I don't know if you can do that, I don't know how you say that in the law, but that's the point of keeping it local.
Right. I might, I understand the point. So we might just look into is that an entity registered with Colorado Department of State where the majority of owner lives in Colorado or something, or LLC or LP that achieves, achieves that objective that you're talking about, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, Robert, I would say.
I'd say lives in Teller County, and you don't have, you have no issue. I mean, you could still have a hedge fund, but the odds are pretty slim that we have them in Teller County.
Well, I have a couple of things here. So it's not just hedge funds, hedge funds, one of the residents brought up that the Marriott was getting into this business. And I looked into it, and they are. So it would have to cover that kind of thing as well. And you know, as far as.
So that they can't advertise? Because they're probably doing something like, I have a short-term rental, and they're making it exposey, just like Airbnb has it on their website, they're trying to do it on a Marriott.
Right, but you could look it on, on a Marriott website instead of through like Airbnb or through a private individual that owns. And they have probably a lot more capital to buy, so. And the other thing is limiting to residents that live here only. There should probably be a stipulation there, if you want that, that maybe there's someone that, because I see, I think half of this town's Texas during the summer. But you know, there might be folks that live in that residence seasonally and own it, and they live out of state, they have an out-of-state residence. So I'd like to consider that as well as a rule, that if they do live on the property, you know, for a certain amount of time, you know, something to at least discuss, that they could rent that out in the summer while they're down in Texas during the winter, you know, something to that effect.
There's three properties on South Street that are owned by three families. Each family, the cabins, they were built in nineteen thirties. Each family has owned each of those three cabins for ninety years. None of them are suitable for residential. They're all short-term rentals. They have been short-term stay places for the families for ninety years. And I don't think we should penalize them if they can no longer short-term rental those properties, or devalue those properties with our ordinance. They don't live in Colorado.
What do you suggest for those folks then?
Well, some provision for grandfathering properties that are pretty much only suitable for short-term rentals.
Can I just clarify, so we get direction? Because if there's no cap, it, it depends on if you guys do a cap. If there's no cap, your two situations are irrelevant. Those two, those two situations should definitely still get a short-term rental license. So is that your issue? Like if you, if you're guys are going to do a cap, you want to discuss that particular situation?
I mean, I, I assume we're going to do a cap. I wasn't here, I was on vacation last council.
Let me also clarify, let me clarify something real quick, too. We already have a hundred and eighty-five days per year is owner occupied. So if you want to, well, just a primary resident.
So they need to have ta, tax refunds, voter registration.
Right, yeah. So if it's not a primary residence, then we need an exception. And you need to think of what kind of language, or what type of exception you want to make. I would agree to have an exception for people in our community like that. I don't, I don't know how to word it, or what, I don't know if you want to say like sixty-day.
What, what exception? Because we, I include in the ordinance that if they have a license now, that they can still go and get one if you guys have a cap.
Well, because you're asking that they not have to get a license.
Well, there's just, there's an issue that they have a license, it's a short-term rental. It's not suitable for long-term stay, doesn't have the kind of features a house would have. It's a little cabin. It's been this way for ninety years.
Right.
And the families still own them, but none of the families live in Colorado.
Right.
They come out here two weeks a year, maybe, and we've got to know them and meet them and help them out with some stuff from time to time. Anyway, it's an interesting story.
But nothing in your ordinance so far, just so you guys don't say anything on residency.
Affects the property value of those short-term rentals if they transition those to another owner. The cap is on the short-term rental license, it doesn't apply to the next owner, so they can't get a license for that to be a short-term rental. The property becomes a lot less valuable because it's not useful for much else. So that becomes a problem for the property owner if they decide to let it go and have somebody else buy it.
I mean, I would say that if that's the case, if it's just as strictly a business interest only, and they want to sell, it's not my responsibility. In this case, for them to run their business, to make sure that their business is worth that much money in the property value.
You could do a fifty-year historical exemption for buildings.
That's, that's all I'm thinking.
But.
These are, these are not apartments.
Where do you set that? Here, here's where we are. We've been given a draft ordinance that Nina has put mile markers in for us to discuss, and it's going to go to the planning commission first. And certainly, these are issues that we should consider in the planning commission before we recommend it back to the city council. But going down this rabbit hole is exactly what Frank said, let's not do tonight, let's pull this back in. Yeah, we've got a, we've got an ordinance to review, the, or the planning commission will review it first, and then we'll make a recommendation to the city council.
So Nina, eighteen point oh-six point four-eight-one, short-term rental unit, page. It says, "Short-term rental unit means privately-owned residential dwelling unit or portion thereof." What are you intending to say there by a portion thereof?
So that would be if we were, I would like to know if we have, or if there's not a huge disagreement with, you know, what you brought up with the person renting their room, that, that's, that might be hard to enforce. But if, if you're, if they are, you are going that way, then you would take away the portion thereof. Because that's for the situation where, like you said, Airbnb was originally for is that if they, someone rents like the top floor of their house, and you kind of share, like, like Airbnb has, allows you to share space with people. So that depends on if you, if everyone agrees that it's something separate, if you're just renting a room in your house versus the whole house, then that would be taken away.
I don't think you have to make that distinction here. I think the owner occupancy would apply whether the owner is there or not there. You don't have to.
But Robert was saying they shouldn't get the license at all.
Okay, well, if you were saying not licensed at all.
I think I'm making a distinction, and I don't know how you, the rest of you feel about it, but I'm making a distinction. My home is my castle, and if I want to supplement a room in it for, for my income, to have the city come in, inspect it, regulate it, and everything else, becomes very invasive to, to my privacy. And that's different than somebody who's making a business of their entire home. And I think we should make that allocation, or make that allowance for them to protect their privacy, protect their freedom of their, of what happens in their own home, as opposed to somebody who's using their home intentionally as a business venture.
And then, and then it further distinguishes what you're saying from someone who it is their primary residence, but when they go on vacation, they rent the whole house out. That's, that's definitely should be within the regulations versus what you're saying.
Correct. Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I just want to make sure I got that clear, because that's like a third definition, kind of, like we have a hundred and eighty-five days that they live in the home.
So I would like us to take away the hundred and eighty-five days, because that doesn't show.
Just to make it their primary.
Primary residence is voter registration, voter vehicle registration. I have, I have good language for that. Yeah, it's very hard to count days, it's very hard to enforce.
They could be on an RV trip for a year.
But then there's another category, that's people that live in their home, maybe three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year, they just rent out a room whenever they want.
That's what, yeah, councilors, the law they brought up. So yeah, you're right, it would be a separate, if, if way to address it, we would have to put in the code that it doesn't apply. But I, I would also want to make it very clear that if they do leave for a week and rent the whole place out, then it's definitely back to these regulations, because that could be very easily.
Just then how do you enforce that?
Yeah, we should be very clear, because this is, this is important. It affects a lot of things, too. Among the other things is whatever cap. We've got, we just gave a whole bunch more room in the cap, because some, some share of these will no longer be counted. So we want to, we're looking for a definite, is that right? We're looking for a definition that says if somebody is in their principal, their primary residence, if they rent out only a portion of it while they're occupying it, that's not covered by this ordinance, it's not, and it doesn't affect any cap or anything else. And it also doesn't, they're not subject, because they don't have to get a license, they don't have to come in and report on the smoke detector or their property insurance or anything else. So that's.
Correct.
And I think that's a planning recommendation.
But if it's, and if it's somebody's primary residence, but they're gone, if they're.
Then short-term kicks in.
Then that does, that does get short-term, and does that, does that then count as part of a cap if there is one?
I believe it would.
Well, they would require a license, and we recap the number of.
Again, we might want to revisit the number of days per year that they're planning to do short-term rentals, so that we don't tie up a bunch of licenses.
That would be very hard to enforce. That would be very, very hard to enforce. I would not recommend that.
But yeah.
I just like to touch.
There's a revenue issue.
Cabs again. I'd like to finish my thought on that. So just because they have those cabins and had it for ninety years, when they want to sell them, I, I understand the property value thing, but they, they have to renew those licenses every year. It's not a guarantee.
I agree.
So it's, it's not something that, I feel for them, and I, I agree with you, you know, I wanted to be able to keep that. But even for them, they won't get special privilege over somebody sitting in this audience that has bought a house that is, you know, planning to use that as a short-term rental, you know, unfortunately. They, so, you know, that's just, we have to keep that fair across the board. And I, I know that's, that's tough, and I don't want to hear that, but that's how I feel about that.
But if they, if they renew the license on an annual basis and they keep their license active, then it doesn't seem like that that license goes back in the pool.
There's a transfer.
That's correct. It's just only on property.
But if they sell the property.
We have an issue with the property ownership changing hands.
Correct.
That the license couldn't be. Ex, transferred or.
That's like everywhere, yeah.
No, but if there's already a cap, they know they can't get it.
Well, that's a wire, beware issue.
I'm just thinking of the families who've been coming here for twenty years, vacationing in that cabin.
Sure.
That's their, that's their place to go.
But there's one actually came on the market yesterday.
It's going to make a profit anyway.
That is, is the same deal. It's been, it's been a VRBO, and I'm not sure why, but now it's being sold as a single-family home.
Right.
Because, for whatever reason, I don't know if it's because of this, but they're not going to rent it any longer, and it's being sold for a family residence.
Right, because they don't have a right to sell the business license.
Correct, that's, yeah, definitely.
Okay, anyway.
You said, we'll be doing this on the planning commission.
So if I may ask clarif, a quick clarification question. Y'all, it sounds like y'all are not wanting to have regulations on folks who have as their primary residence, one of these homes, and then is running out of room. Do, are you still, are you still okay issuing a license, just not having it count against the cap?
No, no license.
How will this be enforced?
That was my question today to my.
Know how to. Who's doing what then? Yeah, that's, that's the concern I have, because then if, I mean.
If one of our efforts here is to provide more housing for long-term rental and affordable housing for workers and things like that, an owner-occupied residence, whether we regulate it or not, isn't going to produce any additional housing by what we put in this ordinance. But the other short-term rental stuff that we do do would affect that.
When they rent.
So I don't see that there's any value other than potential revenue for the city.
I mean, I agree.
Which again, is going to be hard to regulate, it's going to cost us more money.
And I agree with councilmember Zuluaga's principle of it. I don't like any of this. I think we should be able to do with our homes what we want to do, and the government shouldn't be involved. But, but it is, and this is where we're at. So, but my concern is, how on earth is the city going to enforce? You know, whether I'm at my house all the time and renting a room three days out of the week, or you know, twelve days or six days, and I have like five bedrooms in my house. Like, how is that going to be regulated versus, you know, I'm not advertising on Airbnb and I'm doing it. I mean, that's going to happen anyways, but, but to put it in words, like I, I want to know how you put it in wording and how the city can enforce that. It may be that we can only regulate when an entire structure is rented. That's exactly right. Yeah, because we don't apply for permission to go on vacation for three months and rent out our home. Right?
Right.
The entire structure. I just go on vacation and rent out my home if I want to.
And.
But if you did for less than thirty days. If you, well, and, and that's consistent with, with the business license and the lodging tax code as well. Because if it's thirty days or greater, there's no tax due. It's, it's not considered. It's in that, so it's consistent with this, so that makes sense to me. I, I think it, it goes back to, the only thing I think that was ever broken is that we didn't have a definition, a definition within our code. We had bits and pieces which made us look like we were violating our own code. The most important thing for us to do, the most important thing for us to do is to make it as simple as possible for the average property owner.
Right, I agree.
And if it's, you know, if it gets too onerous to try to say, well, we're going to regulate whether or not you rent your bathroom out on a daily basis. And maybe our definition, and, and tonight is not the night to decide, maybe the definition is simply for short-term rental of an entire structure. Maybe, I don't, but this is not the place nor the time.
Well, I think we do want direction from everyone, that would really help. And also, the second thing is, on five twenty-two twenty D, says that short-term rental licenses shall include their business license number on the title. So if there isn't a business license number, then you would look into that, so that might be a way to deal with general compliance and also the situation that Robert was bringing up, because if they start to rent, rent out their whole house, you, you see that they don't have a license number, and then you look into it. Plus, there's uni-revs and that kind of thing that of course.
I wonder if that's doable on the websites. I don't know if they allow for.
It's required in many jurisdictions.
Yeah, I, yes.
So it would be on the VRBO.
It doesn't have to be in the title.
Perfect, I just curious.
Yeah, I took this from other.
Your ordinance says, ask me the title. I don't think it needs to be in the title, it needs to be in the list.
That's where you get most, the best enforcement, because you quickly, the clerks quickly look, and they say they really appreciate that, but that's up to you guys. But it's, if, if it's in the title.
That would create a little bit of a problem for us if we have owner occupied, don't have a license, and non-owner occupied or full buildings do have a license. Your enforcement goes out the window again, because you'll have.
No, it doesn't, because if they're renting just a room, you look, you click on the link, and you see that they're only renting the room. If they're renting the whole house.
Sure, but you have to go on down. You can't just look at the title.
I would put in the title, that's why I would, oh, but if they don't have the number, then.
They don't have the number, you still don't know if it's okay or not, because you have to look on down, see what they're renting. But it provides something, so.
Right, right.
I think our challenge is right now is trying to balance the administration and enforcement to keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah.
Actually make it work without getting into the what-if, and then this would happen, that we can get into a whole chain of things. I, I just, we're trying to really work hard to keep it simple.
Larry, I would agree with you, and, and I would just say that we may, we may put these regulations in place, and, and we'll, it's a starting point, right? It's, it's a place to start, and I like your idea of keeping it simple. And, but our attorney also has advised us that we, it's easier to become less restrictive if we make changes, because they, this can be changed as we learn. We can put something in place and we can implement it, and we're going to learn from it, and we're going to refine it and hone it in to where it works as we move through time, just like anything. And, and we can refine it. It's harder to become more restrictive as we refine than it is to become less restrictive as we refine. So just a thought there, because it's a starting place, probably won't be perfect, probably never will be perfect. But I think that it's a, it's a place to start so that we can get people off this hold that we're on. Hold that we're on. With with some, I mean, we're talk, talking about good things and and to refine some things already. But keep in mind that it's not cast in stone for the rest of our world and that we can revisit it as we learn from it.
This is, yeah, this is very simple because yes, if you guys want it, this is only four pages of, if you actually look at those regulations, but I think on someone else's point. It's good to get policy direction. I think, you know, if we're gonna nitpick words, like explain like why that word was in it, but it's more like, kind of like how our part of like the larger, like. What policy issues do you see? And I know some of you all, like, I mean, Michael couldn't interrupt me, but that would help me is is, um, you know. I don't want to de- debate like why a certain word, it was purposeful, but it's more the general concept. Like, is there anything here that's missing or anything here generally that you don't like or so we could get direction?
Well, I saw something in there about, to your point, Larry, about a self uh self regulation versus inspection. And I think on a simplicity standpoint, I would much prefer self regulation. And then if there's a violation or it becomes to the notice that you know that they're bothering the neighbors, wherever else. And they find that the self uh regulation hasn't been effective, then it would be like root withdrawal of the permit or whatever the, of the license. So uh less cost to the city, absolutely, and less kind of onerous in your face, I think. Let them self regulate. If they screw up, then that's where you come down.
Yes, that's why I said the inspection worksheet, but we could put self inspection or call it whatever the staff called it.
Yeah, what did you call it?
So it was a worksheet that was attached to the license.
So that's what this refers to, but I can make the words more clear.
But that serves as an affidavit. So um, an applicant signs that they obligated themselves to, to um adhere to the.
That's true as well, um, that if this is in the application materials, it doesn't need to be in the code itself. So that's up to you. Because I, I, we still could revoke the license for not following the terms of the license.
Could you correlate for me the supplemental material, right? The license standards and review criteria, the good neighbor document and such.
Yeah. That Rob did that, so I'll let, I'll pass it over to him.
Okay, the reason I say, because those aren't connected to the statute.
Yes.
Statute refers to the fact there is a good neighbor policy.
It refers to anything regarding regarding the application. So if they, if they violate any terms of their license or their application, they can be brought back in front of you.
But since, since the specifics of the license application aren't set forth in the ordinance. Does that mean it's our city manager or his designate from time to time will just put in what those conditions are?
Every year, the person signs onto it. So if they still want to, if they still want to be.
No, I'm not, I'm not being clear there. Question is, what is the sheet that they're signing on to? It's not connected to the ordinance.
It doesn't, it's, it's the good neighbor guidelines that um are in the packet and they're, they change from year to year.
It just says, it doesn't connect up to them.
It does connect up.
Is there, is the intent that the schedules to the ordinance will be the application criteria, good neighbor guidelines?
They don't need to be because the, the code refers to this and this changes every year. Every time someone, they have to sign it. Every year, if somebody has a license, in order to get a license, they need to sign this. We cannot change it uh mid year, but we can change it year to year. And I can bring, you could bring them in front of the city council for a public hearing that would not violate due process, that if they violated this, they can have their license revoked. So.
Okay, so you're saying, so you know, the ordinance doesn't need to say that, that the good neighbor, the good neighbor guideline shall be as the city may establish from time to, you know. Year to year or some.
It's, it, because I say um violation of the chapter, any terms pertaining to the license, including the requirements and good neighbor guidelines listed on the short term rental licenses.
I guess, alright.
Well, and then they attest to the license.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, they agree to everything.
But the license, there's nothing stated in the ordinance that says, what are those pieces that are in the license? The, the city staff could give one, one day and another one the other day just because it's not, it's not cross referenced.
It is cross reference. I made sure of it because it says any terms that pertain to license, including the requirements and good night neighbor guidelines listed on their license. So they're accepting the license.
So it's, okay, I'm sorry. Whoever listed on their license decides, apparently.
They get the license every year. So if they have an issue with it, they cannot do business with the city. Right? Because it's, because I was told by all of you that you didn't want to make it complicated. So we wanted to have it separate. Um, at, this is, I, this is definitely if we revoke someone's license because they didn't follow the good neighbor guidelines, we're definitely. Covered because the person has accepted the license. Every year they, they get those, that application.
And as, and as staff works through it, you can modify these things to keep up with the times. It does with the business, with the license applications, just like we do with business license applications, without having to go through the public hearing process. And the ordinance process and updating the code. The code refers to this and and staff with best practices. Will amend these things from time to time to keep them current and function well. So it makes sense. And that's how, I know that's how the business license ordinance worked, although. I see a difference between this and the business license ordinance is that this is more of a regulatory. It has consequences. We can revoke a license, whereas the business license has no teeth like that whatsoever. It's, it's a vehicle with which to collect and properly re- recollect sales and sales taxes and news taxes for the city. It, it registers businesses so that we can then be sure that they're all on the same page. So that's what I see as a difference here with this license is that it does have consequences and it can be revoked.
Yeah, there's two different separates. I'm reading another section. There have been no violations of requirements and good neighbor guidelines listed on the short term rental license and application materials. The person's definitely put on notice about those.
Lee, did you get all your thoughts out? Because I kind of feel like you're trying to make a point and.
All right, well, I was just telling Carol, so there's, she agreed that we we can add a provision when we see this next time to reference that. I, I actually, I actually have just sort of a bunch of issues with this, but um. The, a lot of the things we're looking at are the standards that are set forth to go in the application. Should we be talking about each of those, the ones we like or don't like? Because I mean, some of them are sort of not even normal lights licensing. One, I thought was interesting, no meals should be prepared for.
Yeah.
By the owner.
Well, that goes back to the definition of a bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
Exact, Carol's exactly right. It's, it's, it's actually, it may be important to put that in. Which means it shouldn't just be hanging around here to do remember in the application. It shouldn't be in the ordinance saying, no, don't serve food. Because the way you figure out what a bed and breakfast is, it's a place, it's a short term rental, but if you look at the. Later on, the things they can do in that short rental says they shall serve breakfast. That's the only thing that creates it. So. If you wish to tie up existing parts of the ordinance, we oddly enough, we need to figure out, do you serve, do you serve breakfast or don't you serve breakfast? Because serving breakfast is a traditional bed and breakfast and they're authorized.
In the definition of short term rental unit, I say not to include bed and breakfast establishments.
And and we may need to make that more specific. Um, again, I don't want us to overthink this, but again, we've only had a day and a half to review it. Um, but then, yeah, there's, there's some aspects of this that we need to make sure we don't allow. Short term rentals to turn into bed and breakfast. And if we need more specificity, I thought I'd never use that word. Um, in the ordinance and so be it, but um. I think it's also important for us to to not change the goalposts for any of our applicants and say, oh, halfway through the year, we changed the good neighbor. Uh, guidelines and uh change.
I just confirm that would never happen. It's in on the application and on the license. So we would have to give a new license that the people would be on notice. You all said you didn't want the good neighbor guidelines in the ordinance. If we have a majority of you saying that, otherwise we'll do it otherwise, but to change an ordinance, the rich requires two readings, planning commission approval. You, we did, we separated them because you all guided us that way, but if you.
Oh, no, I, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying if we have an affidavit that gets signed with certain requirements, we shouldn't change it in the middle of the year.
No, we never do that. We never could do that legally.
They've still signed it when they've got their license, so.
And every year they have to renew.
To sign it till the next, we could change it the next day, but they wouldn't be under it till they sign the next year.
Right, because every year they need to renew.
Yeah, as prior to the renewal procedure of product period or whatever, the things need to be changed. You make those changes now, whereas they renew the original.
I, I think we've all brought up some very good points, but we're at the um diminishing returns point now, aren't we?
Well, you're, you, oh, go ahead.
I have one um pretty much, I I've agreed with most of what everybody said tonight. The only thing that I have an issue with really. Particularly if we go down the whole, my house is my castle. Um. The problem I have is the table now because you're now going to allow businesses to buy residential houses and use them as lodging. So if if we're not going to regulate somebody's castle and they're renting a room, then do we really need to have? Short term rentals in residential neighborhoods? Shouldn't they belong where the other lodging is, which is? Neighborhood commercial, community commercial and and blah, blah, blah. So. That's my.
The net bands for returns.
Yeah.
Not if you look at the uh, the list. No, not if you look at the. No, it, well, maybe, okay, maybe.
I haven't sold any residential in a commercial.
Well, we have seventy seven current licensed residential homes. That are zoned. Or that are, that are STRs. Now, we don't have, we don't know how many of those are owner occupied or residential or whatever. So maybe they all are and we're fine. Right? Maybe they're not. So I don't, that's just my, my two cents. We can. Take it or leave it.
Catherine, I, I think that the, the market is speaking that people want to come to Woodland Park and they want to live in a Woodland Park neighborhood. And they want to enjoy the experience.
Maybe, but the residents don't want them there. So you've got, you've got, if so, you've got both sides. So I'm just playing. Both, both sides given everybody.
And that's why I'm thinking, that, that's exactly why we're, we're dealing with these regulations. And that's why these regulations are not going to be one hundred percent correct the first time we go through, but. But it's going to be an attempt to provide for this use. It's a commercial use in a residential neighborhood and we just gotta safeguard that, those neighborhoods.
Nina, I have a question on the um separation of the good neighbor. So if they violate the good neighbor policy. You can still revoke their license.
Correct.
And then.
Because they signed the license and it was in the application materials and I refer to it. We uh, to Lee's point, you refer to things in the ordinance all the time for like a fee schedule this or that. Um, and I list. Um, that the, I list that in two places where it says, um, let's see, good neighbor.
Uh, that answers my question. You don't talk about, I just want to be clear because that's what I saw that I.
It says, yeah, there have been no, so the city may renew license, have, if there's been no violations of the requirements and good night neighbor gate guidelines listed on the short term rental license and application materials. And then in revocation suspension, it says violations of any provisions, yada, 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 including the requirements and good neighbor guidelines listed on the short term rental licenses. So it's something that they've accepted every year. Of course, we couldn't change it in the middle of the year and and revoke. That would, that would violate due process and the constitutional process.
I'm just wondering how you enforce that if it's not in the ordinance.
Because, because we, we refer to it, uh, because it says um that the license can be revoked for any of the following reasons. And one of them is any of the terms pertaining to their license, including the requirements and good neighbor gate guidelines listed on the short term rental licenses.
And then do we have a number of violations that would put them in uh risk of losing their license if they violated the good neighbor, like? Some, you know, uh, might be an owner that lives here in Teller County, owns a property here. You know, and they can't, can't respond. Somebody complained and now they have a complaint. You know, how many complaints does it take? One? Does it take ten?
No complaints but a violation. And to, to your point, um. I have um maybe sent out ten letters total in the past six years and every single time. It says, you know, you're, you're gonna come to the, come to the hearing you violated. Every single time the person comes in the next day, they don't want to lose a license worth hundreds of thousands of dollars spent. They come in the next day and they, and they fix it.
Okay.
But to your point, not, it's not just a complaint, it's a violation. So someone marked down some.
Well, it should have been clear and said violations. So they violated the good neighbor policy. Somebody, one of their uh tenants did that during their short term rental period. Um, you know, I wondered what was, you know, one incursion maybe is not enough to take their business license away, but if you're a multiple offender.
Correct, but I would recommend.
Maybe that should be in there clearly that if it happens so often in so much time, then you're at risk.
So I would recommend from a practical standpoint that when this comes up. It's going to be that one egregious thing that you have the one violation for and you want to bring them in front of you.
Okay.
We don't have this, yeah, we don't.
I, I totally understand. Okay.
And, and I just know from, yeah, just some experience. Like I said, you bring them in first and 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 I think we all, it, it, um, this, this city probably. It's the same thing like a code enforcement you do, we could do a warning, yada, yada, but.
I have mine marked up on the uh violations. So it says, uh, you, if you want to renew, there have been no violations. I, I put in there no unresolved violations.
Fair enough.
On both of those because it seems that violations are going to happen.
Right.
But an owner will resolve them and then they should be able to continue. It, it's just going to happen. There's no way you can. Say every short term rental is not going to have one violation, but they may be the best short term rental place to stay in all of Woodland Park.
Right.
That's the accountability.
Unresolved.
Might, might we say.
That's simple, but simple to put in.
Repeated violations because otherwise somebody says, well, I've been doing it all year long, but I stopped it today on my, the day of my renewal and it's, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said this.
Yeah, and Lee, that's why, some, some language, it just says, they're resolved.
Significant and, and repeated violations.
Yeah.
That's where that accountability component's built in because they have to be accountable. Otherwise their business goes away and that revenue goes away. That's the biggest incentive. It's the revenue they're going to lose without the license.
Yeah, so I'm saying that in a specific period of time, if in one year, since that's the term of the license. You have had this many violations, then you are not eligible and it should say that. You know what I mean? Something to that effect. And not, not to be, you know, because, like you said, everyone's gonna, eventually somebody's gonna have a bad. You know, experience there and that's going to happen. And you don't want to pull their business license for that or, or, you know, whatever. But if they're a, a repeat offender that's allowing this to go on, then there should be a provision that says if you have this many. You reached whatever that is, then you will get it with, you will not get it renewed. You know, you'll continue throughout the year, but you will not get it renewed. And and then you can't renew it for a one or two year period. So they can reply again in one or two years.
If there's any.
If they have, if they have had this, yeah, there's vacancies. You know where I'm going with this, so.
Just as a matter of typos and stuff, um, you referenced business license as the item to be displayed in some places. You call it permit and others. Probably should use the same language.
Yes, we just want to get started.
And on your definition, section three and section four, you have rental business. Um, unit for the section four, but you call it the short term rental business instead of unit. The first one, short term rental business, the second was short term rental unit. Use business in both paragraphs, so just a couple corrections.
Nina, did you create the license standards and review criteria? Was that, was that you who did that or was that the staff?
I only did the ordinance. So if, 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 is, um, is that an ordinance itself?
So what you, what you're thinking, sorry to drill back on this, but what's your thinking on this no meal should be prepared thing?
That, uh, and to clarify, I plagiarized this most part, but anyway. Um, so that was uh the bed and breakfast thing, like that's what separates this from a bed and breakfast. So it's like your, your. Bed and breakfast are in commercial zones, they're, they're taxed differently, they're, they're bed and breakfasts.
They're listed in the code.
A short term rental that serves breakfast is a bed and breakfast.
Well, and there's a host there to make it for you. Whereas in a short term rental, there's no one there but you.
Well, if you're a private homeowner though, when you do that.
Unless it's talked about.
If you go back to the initial, the initial intent of an Airbnb was, you know, uh, come and sleep on your mattress in my living room and I'll make you breakfast.
Yeah, but like all things, that definition's kind of changed now.
If we don't put.
If we don't, I see those people, that doesn't apply to them.
Covered your blood.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah.
You know, I got a question as um age six of the ordinance, section seven. That seems like it's kind of out of place. It doesn't really reference any codes there.
It's purposeful. So that's if you guys put a cap. Um, it's not, again, we don't use the word grandfather for business license, but it's kind of saying. It, it sounds like if you all do a cap, you want to make sure that the first people to come in are those who already have a business license for short term rental. Like the people who exist right now. Those people would need to get, get their application within the first week to kind of be considered for the short term rental license. But it shouldn't be in the ordinance because it's just for a temporary situation.
Okay, I recommend we read it over to another section.
But then it would be in the ordinance. I mean, it would be in the code. This is, this is purposefully not in the code. Section seven is purposely not in the code because it's just for like, like for the first few weeks of, of the implementation of the, of the ordinance.
You're just trying to clarify.
Yeah, because people are concerned about that, but yeah.
So with regards to, back to the violation uh conversation. Um, just a thought from being in that role before is that, that, that. Operations and that implementation and the management of that is a function of staff. Staff uses good judgment in making decisions all the time with working with taxpayers and license holders. So. And and then council is always there as an appeal process. If they feel like they've been treated unfairly or injustly, they can always come before the council and ask for the council to make a decision. Over and above what this decision of the staff was. So it kind of works nicely that way so that. There's a balance of power and I don't know if that's the right word.
There's a balance of power and I don't know if that's the right word, but that's how implementation has always been, even with the sales tax code. Or, or you all also have the municipal court to help as well. So you have those avenues for appeal. Um, in the event that, um, staff may be unreasonable in the eyes of the.
That's why I'd like to see that, you know, hard thing in there that says if you have this many violations, um, you know, within that.
But I would leave that in the hands of staff in my opinion. I think, I think the language that was either Larry or Kenneth suggested by saying no unresolved, I think that's a good starting point rather than just leaving it open. So no unresolved violations. So, cause that gives staff discrepancy.
So I, I'm concerned about this because this is what the residents that I've heard from are concerned about is the disruption of their residential area. And so if you don't say that and it's just unresolved, well, they could come apply for their business license again and have twenty violations and it wouldn't matter. I'd rather them have it, rather say that there's got, you know, if you have multiple violations in this period, then you will lose your license. Um, it can be revoked or it could be suspended. And then if it does, because they had that number of violations in that time period. Um, and staff is doing, you know, uh, following the policy and they don't like the policy and they are asking. You know, to retain their license or get it renewed, then that's when they would come to council and state their case. Otherwise, I mean, they could continue to apply for licenses and never have suspension if they, if it's, you know, resolved.
So can I make a suggestion? Um, I, I took those notes. I think, um, it's, I think we all want guide, like guidance on the, on the larger policy issues like the caps, the primary residents, the. Um, all that before it goes to planning commission.
So if we go to the, cause that was actually what I was going to bring up next was to try to get to the cap. If we're not going to. Require STR owners or owner occupied STR licenses, then should we reduce the percentage of the cap from six percent? But I mean, we, the problem is we don't know. So I don't know if we just go with a lower number to start with, like Kelly said, and if we need to go higher, higher. No, we start with a lower, you start with a lower number. And if it's not enough, then we come back and raise it to six percent.
Anecdotally, just the past couple of years, very few people fit into the situation. Unfortunately, that, um, Council Zoolaga said, um, I, I think we could check quickly, but in terms of like just renting their room out.
It's not, okay. All right.
Fortunately, it started that way.
But we could still, if you go to, like Kelly said, if we start out with a more strict number and it turns out that it's not enough, we can always raise the number.
Yeah, I think what Nina is asking though is do we in fact want a cap? What, what that cap is or?
Right, right.
Yes.
I'd say, yeah.
Yes. I mean, I think we all want a cap. And then I guess we go to the question of do we want the cap plus the density cap or?
Density is an enforcement nice.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
An example would be, um, as a real estate agent, and I have a client that wants to buy this house on this block. And there's already one on that block, but I don't know that. I would not place that trust in the hands of a real estate agent to make that determine, because that's who's going to have to look into it before they sell that property. And then they, if they close on that property and then they come in and they're like, oh, you can't have a license because there's already one on that block. That's not a good situation.
No, but you could also go back to your buyer beware.
Well, it is absolutely. So I'm sure.
I'm just putting it out there.
I understand.
Didn't we have that guy send us an email just last week, week before, whenever? I think you all got it. He says, I didn't know you guys were doing any of this and I spent all my money to buy these. Uh, I mean, isn't that part of that buyer beware? Isn't that like not our responsibility to, to?
But can I just say one thing? Because when you apply for a business license. When you apply for a business license, you should go to planning and check to ensure that that business is allowed at that address.
I agree.
So I'm, I'm, you know, we've got a hundred and fifty eight of them who haven't done that. So that's why our zoning is where it is now. Because if you, if finally everybody up here's agreed that it's called lodging, you know, so it's taken a long time to do that. And I appreciate that, but please understand that this is a detriment to our city, allowing the short term rentals. It is not good for our city. It's not good for our schools, not good for our teachers, our police officers. It is a nightmare.
And I would say the density thing is important to address because if, and I'm looking at this from the, you know, perspective of residents. Not happy with some of them in their neighborhood or living right next to it. Cause a lot of people may not care until they have to live next to one and it bothers them. So if you've got three of them, now you have three of them next to you and you know, so.
You've lost.
And now. Yeah. And so maybe they're trying to sell their house and they know to find out those are three STRs across from them or five or however many, since they can buy what they want. Um, you know, that may lower their property values. People aren't going to want to move in next to it.
So what I'm hearing is you do want. Proper percentage.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to get some feedback on it, you know, like I think it should be at least considered.
Interesting for planning commission viewpoint, we're interested in hearing on these points and if not in formal votes, we see how many heads you're nodding. I think I may have heard four, seen four nods maybe on that. But it's, it's helpful to us to get your, your input.
Well, I also have a concern about enforcement on density with, with, are, are we hiring a full time staff member now? Are they the ones that are going to be watching these addresses? Like how are we, you know, the, I, I'm not against a cap, but I think me personally, this is just me personally, if you're going to do a cap, do a general cap. If you want to, if you want to do restrictions on caps, do owner occupied versus non owner occupied restrictions. But to try to break it all the way down to a specific neighborhood and a specific block, who is watching this?
Well, and currently, right? Beautification of the city.
Because they're the ones responsible for enforcing this.
Well, the idea of keeping these out of certain residential areas, is there any reason to cap them if they're in a commercial area?
I don't see why we would cap them in a commercial area.
I wouldn't see why we would either. So I, I understand the cap, maybe this should be applied to the zone, but.
So residential areas.
Then maybe people would say, I want to build short term rentals with the park because there's a huge market for it. People want to come and stay there and visit, spend money. And there's, there's not be a detriment to Woodland Park. Maybe it's need to be a commercial property.
Yeah.
I think we all want more hotel space or something or lodging. So maybe we look at it that way as well. Our, our title eighteen covers, uh, short term lodging in commercial areas. It's already in place. Doesn't have to say anything in our short term rental ordinance about that. No, it's, uh, lodging is allowed in all of our commercial districts. So they.
But if it's a residential unit, we would, they would, I would say that they have to go towards some licensing.
Great.
Michael, go ahead. And going back to the mayor's question.
But maybe the cap wouldn't apply to commercial short term rents.
Is that what most people feel?
Sounds like expanding Karen's crazy idea.
Yeah.
Overlay. More available, put them in commercial areas. It's sort of similar idea.
Put them on top of pizza parlors. Let, let me, let Michael, Michael wanted to say something. So I'm going to go ahead and let him go first.
So going back to the mayor's question about the, the buffer and how, how does that look administration wise? In our draft, uh, our guidelines here, is that what these are, application, uh, it does need to go, you would need to go through planning in order to make sure that. Your license is valid and we would, a density analysis would create that extra step. We would need to have someone who does that. That takes time to do that. Something else to keep in mind too, is that already with the existing license, business licenses, there are clusters of these things. Together tightly compacted in a neighborhood. So you would have to consider how a buffer might impact those folks. Now, so there are some units, multifamily units out there in which several of those units or all those units in that structure are already short term rentals.
Right.
And so that, that adds an additional layer of complexity that you're going to have to consider. And that's a difficult one. I'm, I, I don't know how best to handle that.
Well, you know, Michael, on that issue, when there's multiple in a multifamily home situation, like an apartment building. And there's that many units in there. Well, that's what a hotel is. So I see that as a very different thing.
Well, it's code currently prohibits in, in apartment buildings and melded family.
And there, there are just a handful of them out there, but they are out there.
There are.
And not, and not disagreeing by any means. It's just, it's something that would, you'd all want to be considering.
Commercial. Multifamily is a commercial.
There, there's, I think there's eleven units and then multifamilies.
Trail Ridge is not zoned commercial.
No.
What are those rentals?
Multi family.
Those are apartments. We're, we're talking about multi, yeah, multifamily.
Urban.
Urbages.
There, there are eleven, there are eleven in our multifamily zones.
Okay.
That's all their issues.
There's just one pet peeve I have is legislating something that we cannot enforce. It's a waste of time.
I mean, we can enforce it if there's a fee that is tacked on to, uh, have that FTE to do that.
Well, and that's where that license fee.
And the voters voted to get for beautification for the city. That's where that dollar goes to. It does not go to enforce.
This would come from the license fee for the short term rental license and it would need to, the analysis done to set that at a level. That would pay for itself.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Or at least nearly pay for itself, come really close. And we have the ability to adjust that as time goes and inflationary pressure or whatever that might be. And understand that, that no matter if, the more deep we dive, the more expensive in staff time. We're going to have to have a person that does that. And that comes with salary and benefits and all of the, that, that comes with that and software and to, in order to. Properly enforce something that we've put in place. So that, that's a consideration that I think we really have to take into account here. Because it's, it's, you're looking at approaching a hundred grand. And so, and so we would need to set the license level. I mean, we're talking five hundred dollars or above now. Understanding that the, the revenue stream of that business venture certainly supports a higher fee. And, and is I think appropriate, but that's, and that's an analysis that, that the staff would have to bring back to us, um, to set that level. But that's just something to take in consideration. The, the more regulation, the more expensive.
Is, is that what the fees looking at now is five hundred dollars? Is that?
I don't know.
You could almost mathematically guess.
It's up in that area.
I, I would. It, it depends on what you're, what you want to do in, uh, enforcement wise. If you are looking at city inspections.
Yes.
You would be, it would probably be in the eight hundred to a thousand dollar annual range.
I, that's over, to me, that's overkill. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but you know. Uh, control, control it, uh, self regulated and, uh, have at least amount of onerous protect neighbors like Frank's clearly got a concern about. But you know, gee, we just don't want to create another level of bureaucracy in my mind. I don't know what he's.
So I think we have a good start.
Yeah. So if we're going back to the density issue, you're saying that.
I have no interest in that.
I know you don't, but. You would have, either way, the, the business license has to go to planning. So, right? Is that?
So the way we set this up.
That's what I'm trying for us. How you're setting this up? So.
The way we set it up for the application comes into finance. Finance says, okay, you know, hey, they paid for it. Like I put it in here. It's like. Finance says, hey, uh, here's everything, the package is complete. They paid for it. It goes to planning. Planning looks at it and says, hey, where are they? So that goes back to like you said, like it took a long time to go through a hundred and eighty places and figure out where each. Hundred, like took a while to go through to figure out which zone each of these in, is in. So. When the application comes in, planning stamps that, hey, it's in this zone. So now we keep track of it for, for the future. And then they look at, hey, are there any caps that, and does it fit in with that cap? Is it a, you know, number cap or is it a density cap? And that's as simple as like looking at it on GIS. Here's the property. The next closest property is a mile away or five hundred feet away or whatever. We're putting a string around it. It's like, hey, it's, it's clear.
Could, could I suggest we do the planning thing before we pay?
We do that now with home occupation permits. It's just a routing.
Right.
Just like we do with planning applicants. We route that through a series of people to review so that compliance is there.
Yeah, we don't do that now.
We did not with business licenses, but home occupation, yes. I, I guess my angst is if we're already going through planning and we're not doing a hundred and eighty at one time now, right? We're going to.
Add-ons.
Add-ons, right? So is it that much more to have them spend the time to go figure out what zone they're in so that you don't have six right next to one another?
Well, I would say that I heard, uh, Karen mention, I think seventy six or seven times, uh, about three council sessions ago that she doesn't have enough staff.
Well, I know that, David.
You know, that, I'm just saying, so I, I think we should look at the density thing and we should look at what the cost would actually be to have the FTE to handle that. And then who does that?
Right.
Is that someone in the planning department that we add an FTE to the planning department who assists Karen and then does this, which I think that might be a good idea. That's a way to help your planning department out as well. But I think that's something we have to have more information on. I just want to consider it.
And you also could charge more. It sounds like there'll be a higher, uh, higher charge for the first application for somebody come in, right? Cause in the second time, can't you, they come in, you already know where they are located. So some places have a certain fee for the first application and then a renewal is cheaper. But you want to make sure it does cover costs because otherwise the rest of your taxpayers are, are bringing the burden. Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
Right. So you have to be willing to set a license fee. It's, it's the, the stricter you want to get and the more work you create. The higher that license fee is going to need to be, and we're going to need to be willing to put an employee in the budget. And if you are not willing to consider that, please don't talk about further restrictions. That's, that, that, that's all I can tell you is the, the stricter you want to get, the more money it's going to cost. So think about that. And be willing to either set the fee high and cover it in the budget or shut up.
Serious.
Hillary, just say about you.
And the other thing is we still, we still have all this list of things to consider that Rob gave us. We've touched some of them. But that was really kind of why we were here also is they needed these things to get wrapped up and we have about half an hour to do that. And I feel like we're not settled necessarily. I don't think they have real concrete direction. To really get this formatted out. You still had a concern about how many violations can there be? No one backed you. No one gave a number. There was no. Anything on that. So I don't know if you would like to ask staff to come up with a, if there's a city that has an example of that.
Notes of that, I think, uh, and then that's something you guys could easily like look over when you get it. I, I think more we need to, to your point, those main like.
Yeah. Right. So, and the, so density, do we have any kind of cohesive? I know planning, they've got a suggestion. They can make it stricter. They know how to do it. Do you want that to be considered by density and an overall cap? Or do you want just an overall cap? Is there any kind of consensus on that yet?
Before you answer that question, let, let me give you my, my, my take on that.
Please.
I think that the density cap, the separation between units is one of the strongest provisions to protect existing neighborhoods. That is a very critical part of not having law cluttered, not all concentrated in one area. Separation is very important.
I'd like to add that if we're at five point nine percent and we set the cap at six percent without density, we've still accomplished the same thing. Because there's no additional STRs going in till somebody moves out anyway. So it may be a first step is we just have the cap tight like it is now. But it depends on how you want to enforce it.
But if we take the owner occupied out, then that number's going to go down. Remember we've, we've kind of come, I think to consensus.
That's possibility as well. So.
And I also heard our attorney say that's not a significant number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So can, if, if that's the case, the question then is.
Renting one room is not a significant.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. So, or Larry, um, so if you've got already a cluster in neighborhoods, what's causing angst now? And you just cap it and that solves it. You haven't solved that problem, then you'd still have the issue of grandfathering or not grandfathering people who are all clustered in the same area like they are now. Yeah. And I don't know what that number is. Do you know, Rob, what the number is of clustered?
Well, we can't actually grandfather anybody because we don't have any ordinance to grandfather amendments.
Well, true enough.
Plus I apply for a license every year.
So I had, I had.
If they've got the license already, what I'm seeing and they're.
But they, but they don't. Wait, wait. No one has a license yet.
Right.
They have a business license. We are now creating a whole other.
Okay.
Bureaucracy. So there's no way to grandfather in someone on something they do not have.
I would propose that if you have a cluster of STRs that pre-exist and they meet the guidelines that we've set forth in this ordinance and the good neighbor policy. They don't have a ton of violations. They don't have a ton of complaints and issues and they come in and apply for a license. They don't have a ton of violations. They don't have a ton of complaints and issues and they come in and apply for a license. Nothing would flag them to not get that license. However, if it's not a good neighbor situation, which is the ones that the neighbors would have an issue with, that would be a reportable opportunity that would get them considered to not get their license renewed. And that would be taking care of itself through that means rather than.
Let Nina clarify this. So section seven of the ordinance on which I know, I think Larry asked about earlier, it's not in the code. That's purposeful. And this is for, if you guys put a cap, a person with a current business license that does short term rental business. They're going to be take processed first, but they need to actually fill out the whole application and submit it. So that deals with the whole issue of, you know, if they are already existing.
They'll, they'll get in line first, but they are not grandfathered into what they are doing.
No.
Ken, can I say something for saying, I agree with a hundred percent what you said about the density. And Larry, you were talking about, should we have the density? You're going to have to, in the planning commission, when you write up your proposal to us, explain how you would do it. If you do something other than what Ken is saying, because if they're following the good neighbor policy, where's the angst? I mean, I don't want a bunch of bureaucracy that we can't enforce and why are you doing it density? If they're following the good neighbor. So just explain why you would want to do it, but please consider what Ken pointed out. Obeyance of good neighbor. You don't have a density thing.
So does staff feel like you have?
Can we pull up those other bullet points? Is there any way to go back to the?
Yeah. Do you feel like you have direction with, with the the cap at all?
You guys had a cap. I don't know what the percentage would be. And it sounds like the majority of you said residential, in the residential zones.
What is the six percent? What, what number is?
I mean, isn't the average in the state like three percent?
Right now, that's six percent is a hundred and eighty, right?
Yeah. So we're looking at every percent is about thirty short term rentals.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Rusty, go ahead.
Yeah, to the cap thing because I'm listening to a lot of comments. I would ask, because we're trying to get a consensus, that when you're considering caps, could you please look at differentiating between owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, which is something, Robert, you. And then what Kelly pointed out, resident owned versus non-resident owned. They're different. No, they are very, very different. So I'm just look at those two terms.
And just to clarify, Robert only spoke to if they're renting the room out. There's a lot of people who could rent their whole house in their primary residence and they should still get a short term rental.
I understand. That's what I'm saying. Just in your cap analysis, an owner occupied versus non-owner. And then a resident owned versus a non-resident owned. So that non-resident owned or resident owned, please consider EINs and SSNs, you know, businesses versus people.
And Buena Vista.
I recognize that. Don't we have a we don't have a like a five hundred foot buffer or in that?
It was mentioned and that's why we want.
I thought if we did something like that, you wouldn't have to worry about a cap. Because you wouldn't have to worry about a density cap because you'd spread it out just by virtue.
It's more than that, Frank. It's more than just five hundred foot separation.
Well, I mean, it's just, I just throwing that out there, right?
But regardless, you still have the cluster problem that you already have. What are you gonna do? Tell this other person they gotta move?
Eventually, those licenses are going to expire. The property is getting transferred. And so the density would then gradually spread out. It may not be the first ten years, that's twenty, thirty years. You know, you're going to have more dispersed around the city. And I think we need to look at the long range planning.
Exactly.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because if if somebody does lose their license or somebody just stops operating it, then you could say that that property now can't be. It's got to be within the density, you know, and you don't have to make the current people as long as they hold their license. So I know we've talked about grandfathering, right? But that they, they don't do that, but we could have that stipulation that now we're not going to tell you, you can't and you still get in line. We, and we could have that. Since we are, we are changing the rules here, we could have it instead of saying you're first come, first served or you guys get to come, you know, get in line first. We could say, you know, you have two weeks or thirty days or whatever for all existing, if we choose to go with the cap that accepts that. To go ahead and let them, you know, guarantee reapply. So we're not putting anybody out.
So section seven, yeah. So we're asking Nina then to include both a discussion of a percentage cap, a density cap and a zone cap, all three numbers to be determined.
I think, isn't the zone cap though only going to be for the resident?
I heard from that you, most of you.
Residential only.
And the buffer, when you guys said that density, you mean five hundred foot buffer? That's what you mean by density?
And what do you guys think?
Urban residential houses are thirty feet apart, so.
So it could be different for urban versus suburban.
And suburban residential could be up to an acre apart, so.
So just a placeholder for her to.
And then do, do women, consensus of you agree that beyond the cap, you should have an exception for residency or not?
No.
I don't know.
We don't know yet.
For residency?
For a primary resident.
Right.
Versus.
The owner occupied part with just a room out, it seemed to be, they don't need a permit.
So that.
Occupied, it's renting the whole house out because they're going to Florida for six months. But they don't get capped because it's their house.
Is that what I hear? So maybe the lower the cap.
Yeah, are we saying that? Yeah, we should change the cap number if that's the case.
If you're renting your house out for six months, it's, it's no longer.
It's also not short term.
Well, can I say, well, historical, all, all the short term rental ordinances that have primary residents, that was because they wanted to regulate them. That was their cap. So usually, you don't do.
What do, what do you say?
So like, when these, these started to come out, there was no caps in the ordinance, including Denver. And they instead of self-limit it, it was only primary residence.
Right.
Then the cap was put in for other communities who didn't have that primary residency. Primary residency is a restriction that helps cap in and of itself.
Right. And that, that was the, when it comes down to non-owner occupied and residential zones. I wanted to really only be for owners of Teller County could actually own an STR in Woodland Park and. So.
That's the concept.
That's, that would limit quite a few things and it would open up some of our housing. And I think that would be a prudent thing to do.
Well, we do have people in El Paso as well who own up here.
I'm not concerned about El Paso. Have to be in El Paso to have a short term rental, so they have their roles too.
So. So I didn't know. I just heard somebody talk about when you take owner occupied out of it, that's not part of the cap number. I, I don't think that should, I think it should be included in the number. I think it should be.
But the owner occupied of the full building, not.
Of the full building, yeah, yeah. We, we've already set aside the people who are. Yeah, yeah. Those people are not included in this at all. But, but in terms of, of somebody who, who rents a place for six months, who goes out of town for six months, they are part of the cap. Yeah, in my opinion. Only if it's short term rentals during that six months. If they rent it for six months, that's a long term rental. Whoa, that's a different, yeah, totally agree. Yeah.
And if we're talking about enforcement, it's much easier to have a cap than the the places that I work for that have the primary residency, like I'm always talking to people and like, you know, we're kind of threatening with them. Looking at their voter registration and because people try to be clever. So just to think of that, it's wow.
So when I hear where you are actually defining what an applicant is.
Yes.
Why this, or this information? We need to be very careful.
Define.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why Rusty wanted to get that information to find out what we're actually looking at. It's hard to decide if you, what cap you want to have if you don't even know what you're looking at and how you're going to define that. First, you need to know what you even got, what you have.
Exactly to David's point. I'm not saying cap it or not. And then toy around with numbers.
We don't know who are owner occupied or non-owner occupied. We don't have that data right now.
How do we get that?
Oh, going forward, going.
Rob, how do we get that?
So, yeah, we can, like, that's what we talked about, changing the process of the application and we'll have that data in the future. We're going back short of figuring out how to contact every STR license owner right now.
Right.
But Rob, can you see how many people have applied to a Woodland Park address?
Sometimes, but they're very.
They have to get their address, right, when they apply for a business license?
Sometimes. That's like, that's why I have like those eighteen that I can't even find. Cause like addresses, the, the process is really kind of messed up. So addresses are in the wrong places and, and tying them down is difficult.
So guys, we have, we have twenty minutes left and there's still like twelve topics on here that we haven't covered. So I like, we haven't covered certificate of occupancy requirements, limiting the number of licenses that a single person can have. Liability insurance. There's a number of things we haven't looked at or talked about yet.
Liability insurance goes without saying.
Well, yeah, but.
And I would say you don't need to, the CO is irrelevant for, because of my definition. I, it's not a residential dwelling unit unless it has a CO.
No, you changed the definition to business.
No, it's privately owned residential dwelling unit.
As opposed to somebody who has a lot and they've come in and asked for a license.
They couldn't, so there is no need to. That's why I wrote, it's everything I wrote is purposeful.
So are we going to talk about primary residents and being able to have an SCR? Having a voter registration card, Colorado license.
I think we've been.
We have a consensus.
We don't have to decide how, whether it's a Colorado license. Primary resident. Process of reading the application, you decide what evidence.
I, I do know, that's fine. I, I don't, I don't hear consensus that you want to do anything with the primary residency. Because you, you'd put it in the ordinance only if you're going to restrict it only to primary residents or make some kind of exception. And I haven't heard a consensus.
What do we do with all the STR owners who aren't primary residents? That's, I'm curious about that myself.
The licenses get new when we finish this. So everybody's on the same footing. Everybody gets a chance. We're not taking away anybody's home. They're still home owners. This is just regulating businesses within our neighborhoods. That's exactly what this is. I'm unconcerned about anybody else other than the current residents now.
I'm thinking all the current property owners in our city.
Right.
I am. Who don't live here.
Percent, if you live in Teller County, you should be allowed out of short term because our police chief and our sheriff.
So this goes all the way back to the cap discussions. So we're still on that topic. Because we can't get past it. So.
Maybe I could break it down like options. If you only want a cap in residential, you know, let me just go through a few ideas. A cap, just residential zone is what I'm hearing. When we say primary residency, I haven't heard any direction as to why that's relevant unless a consensus of you tell me that either all licensed or all licensed, or all licenses that don't have licenses right now in the future are going to be primary residents of the county.
Why that differentiation? Well, I think the relevancy that Frank's talking about with this is that the sheriff and the police chief know who to go to, right? But the truth is, we have a good neighbor. That's why I asked this question earlier. There is an agreement that they sign that if they violate that, they can have their license suspended or revoked, right? It doesn't really matter where they're from.
Right. So I'm trying to figure out if a majority even want that to be in the code for any reason.
And that would restrict your people that may live here three months out of the year and rent the rest of the time. So.
Longer than thirty days.
So if they like live down south or somewhere else, living in Canada and they come here and they you know, live here for a few months of the year and then they rent it the rest of the time, that's over thirty days. Then, yeah, they'd be part of the cap.
Well, I, I think what Nina's trying to determine, there's one, one individual on the dais that says, nobody but people who live in Teller County and own property in Teller County should be eligible to have an STR license. But there are others that are saying, you know, if you live in.
My neighbor built a house that lives across the street from me. He lived there his whole life, but he has only lived there three months out of the year, the last ten years. Cause he has another residence.
Well, what is the planning commission?
And it's not mutually exclusive. It could just be.
I don't see why we would penalize him.
Out of county people from owning property here.
Right. Well, they can own it. They just couldn't use as an SCR.
Why are we limiting that?
Why are we saying that?
I, I don't think we should. I think there's a, there's a.
Because you usually do it to limit, but if you're going to have a cap, then that's another way to limit it. It's like, what kind of could be one or the other, right?
And then we wait for the constitutional challenge to come eventually.
I don't think.
Yeah, why are we discriminating against? Property for years versus somebody who.
It's simpler to have.
Can buy it tomorrow and rent it.
It's, that's getting into too many.
Just a general.
We would have to consider. I think just a general serves the purpose that we're looking for.
Code with a good neighbor.
I agree.
Can I give the rationale why I asked for that? Just so you can consider.
And then before you do it, let, let me just let everyone know. Now we're getting close to starting council. So we've got the cap issue covered. We're going to have to have another work session to get the rest of these covered, I think. Unfortunately. Anyways, please, for the next meeting, can we make a special meeting so that we can get on with this? I'm not real interested in continuing moratorium if we can avoid it at all costs. So if we can make arrangements to have. So let, let me let Rusty get back to his question and then we'll circle back to how we're going to wrap this up.
And for clarity, it's not a question. It's, it's an explanation why that categorization. Because I heard Robert's concern about corporations coming in, buying up large tracts. You can, if you want to put a cap on non-resident owned, you limit what the corporations can come in and buy. If you take a resident owned and it's not capped or it has a much higher cap, whatever you want to look at. It's a way of controlling the culture not being poisoned by big corporation coming in and taking.
Nina has that because she said she has the Buena Vista model. Well, Buena Vista model addresses.
Well, she, you asked the question, you know, why?
Because so it's like, do you guys just want to live by cast or do you want to do it by residency or both? It's like kind of.
It's a matrix of, it's a two by two matrix. Cause you see it both ways.
Yeah. So you can, you can always find in, when a business registers with the Secretary of State's office, there is a registered agent. On there for every business. So that registered agent should be the one that can be contact for issues with that business. There's contact information. I register my business every year. And it doesn't matter whether you're a corporation, you're the Marriott, you're.
She just, Nina just wants to know if we want to go with the cap or do we want to go the rest? And I say a cap.
Yeah.
But I think the consensus just so said out loud, I think is cap.
Just, just quickly too, remember whatever we're doing here can be changed. We can evolve all of this over time because we're going to learn things. We're going to discover stuff. You know, so if we need to suddenly cap with residential only or what have you, we'll get that figured out. But this is just a starting point to, to get going.
As of now, I hear percentage cap for residential zones.
Yes.
And, and just because we've had three of these joint work sessions by now and we are under the moratorium and I know that's created angst for some people.
Yes.
I would propose we draft this as Nina has, Nina understands it. And take it to the planning commission, probably what it said September eighth timeframe.
And then if you want to wrap up, you guys could turn your meeting, maybe start at seven fifteen, but I think it's good to get. I feel like you're going to always fill the vacuum, but it's up to you guys.
I, I think it will take them longer than that to.
Yeah. And I don't want to see an ordinance that we've agreed. I saw one tonight. It was a good with, and I haven't had enough time to talk about it.
I guess what I'd recommend is let, let us, planning commission work some of these things out. We heard a lot of the issues.
I like that. Yeah.
Prior to conducting the public hearing for that process, we'll come back to you and say, here's a draft regulation. We think we've addressed these things.
I like that. I think that's a great idea.
And I'm going to amend based on. And I'm gonna amend based on like a consensus what I got to give it from the planning commission, right, that's what I was gonna do.
And that's really the rule of planning commission, actually. Right, but I, just so the public accounts is where we, October sixth is when the moratorium ends.
We'll have to extend it by October sixth.
Yeah, we'll have to extend it by then if we cannot get this resolved prior to that, so I just want to give the public a heads up, we are aware of the date. And we.
Well, the moratorium is really, all it's doing is freezing things.
Right.
So, you know, the fact that we have to freeze it for another three months is not the end of the world.
No, it is for some people. It is for some people, yeah.
Absolutely, they're losing money every day.
They either have a license now or they don't.
There's people that have bought property that are waiting to start with a license. And they're losing money. Right, it doesn't have to be another three months.
No, no, it could be thirty days.
But I just want to remind all of you, to keep that in mind, look this stuff over prior to any next work session or meeting. You can always put suggestions in an email, send them to Suzanne, so she can share with the rest of council and planning commission, so everyone can look at them. You can do feedback prior, so. Yeah, it's not quasi judicial, so. Alright, so with that, we're gonna end this work session, planning commission, thank you, I hope to hear your recommendations. Thanks, everyone.